I think so, but the one thing I will wonder, well, I'll just open the meeting and say we'll call the meeting to order and welcome to everybody who's here with us. This is the regular meeting of the Board of Education of Castro Valley Unified School District. And we're happy that you're here with us. Our first thing is to know if there's any public comment on any of the items that are on the agenda for the closed session. So Amy, if you're there, do we have anybody who would like to speak?
No, we do not.
Okay, since there is no one, we will reassess to closed session. And I think we will return, I believe it is at seven, is that correct?
Yes.
Seven o'clock, we'll be back to open session. So thank you all for being patient with us and we'll now reconvene to closed session. See you in a little while. Session here. At our meeting and the first step in that is to do the pledge of allegiance and we're very happy to have our student member here Shane to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. So Shane, take it away.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Shane. The board took no action during closed session. We'll move on to approval of the agenda. I think there are some changes to the agenda. A new personnel report, I believe. Is there anything else?
Just personnel.
I'll move a purple of the agenda as well.
Thank you, Allen. Is there a second? Thank you, Michael. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none? Well, let's see, can't do that anymore, can I? I have to call them by name. So Shane, what's your vote?
Yes.
Okay. Lavender?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Dot?
Yes.
And I'll say yes, so it's approved five to nothing. The mission statement, trustee Adams.
Oh, sure. In partnership with the community, Castro Valley Unified School District educates students in a learning environment that is safe, nurturing, and culturally responsive. Students are guided by excellent inspired staff utilizing innovative instruction, curricula, and technology.
Thank you very much, Dolly. Okay, the board respects and encourages the public to comment on matters on the board agenda and within the board's jurisdiction. The board fully supports civil discourse and requests that everyone respect each other and their point of view. Individuals who would like to address the board must raise their hand during the start of an agenda item. To comment by video conference, click the raise your hand button. And to comment by phone, raise your hand by pressing star nine to request to speak when public comment is being taken on the eligible agenda item. You will then be unmuted during your turn and allowed to make public comments. After the allotted time, you will then be remuted. Individual speakers are asked to limit their comments to no more than three minutes. There are up to thirty minutes of public comment allowed on each agenda item. With board consensus, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed. This meeting is being recorded to prepare the official minutes. So we'll move on to the student board member report. Thank you Shane.
It's a little less than last time, but we have a few good things going on. At the high school, it is, we just started Sauce Pop, which is a ten week period celebrating diversity through student-led activities, and that's usually spearheaded by our clubs. The high school is planning on hosting our virtual assembly probably in the next couple of weeks. Canyon web leaders have hosted multiple virtual events for the sixth graders. High school clubs have continued to hold fundraisers at local businesses. And our high school has hosted eighth grade parent night with a panel of teachers, administrators, and students to answer parent questions and give them a sense of our campus community.
Great. Thank you Shane. So tonight we have, as our special guest, Independent Elementary School. So Liam, would you like to welcome them?
Yes, I sure would. Hold on one second. Let me make sure I'm not on mute. Yes, it's, it's great to have Mr. Patrick Hansen here. To share all the wonderful things about Independent Elementary School. I know you saw Patrick actually present when we talked about CVVP before. But this is Independent Elementary School where he's a principal at. So thank you so much for joining us, Patrick.
Nice. Thank you for having me.
I'm sorry, give me one second. I'll have it up in one second.
That's okay. I have some beautiful slides for all of you tonight.
Sure you do. Your website is always a tree to look at.
I have fun with it. Okay, you can go to the next slide, Amy. So I like to start all of my presentations with Independence' mission statement because everything we do should be focused on this statement. Which is, in partnership with the community, Independent Elementary School educates students in a safe, supportive, positive, and welcoming learning environment. Where they are immersed in a well-rounded and rigorous curriculum with an emphasis on the whole child and their social emotional learning. Next slide. Tonight, I want to focus on this part of the statement, in partnership with the community. And how we at Independent create a true partnership involving two-way communication and the ability for families to influence policy and practice. Next slide. With an understanding that a safe, supportive, positive, and welcoming environment is going to look very different depending on the student or the family that we're focusing on. And so it's, it's going to be important for us to elicit feedback from a wide range of community members and families to, to understand, to truly understand the diverse perspectives that we have at the school. Next slide. So the way that we do that at Independent is through our family-friendly survey. And this was developed based on a resource that was provided to us from Nancy Dome of Epic Education. Each year we give this survey, one in the fall and then a follow-up in the spring. This year, we got over three hundred responses to our fall survey, which is about seventy-five percent of our population in terms of family numbers. Next slide. So these are the questions that we asked. This year, we focused on communication because we know that in distance learning, communication is even more important now than it ever was before. And you can see that we ask questions everywhere or everything from how the office staff communicates, how the teaching staff communicates, how is our follow-up when they have questions? Are we providing information for them to know how to support their child at home? And are we sharing positive news with the families? And then we also focused on equity because equity isn't always should be at the center of everything that we do. And you can see that we've got three questions there that get a sense of how families feel within our, our school community. Next slide. This is tied to our SIPSA or a Single Plan for Student Achievement. We have a goal around this survey. The goal is having eighty-eight percent or higher of respondents agree or strongly agree to the statements that are presented to them. And I want to acknowledge that eighty-eight percent is a really ambitious goal for all of the questions, but at Indy, we shoot for the stars. We hope to reach it. Next slide. And so this is how we stacked up. You can see on the left, a brief summary of all of the questions. The teal part of the bar is the respondents that marked agree or strongly agree, and then the yellow are the percentage of families that marked sometimes or needs improvement. And you can see that for seven out of ten of our goals, we, we met our eighty-eight percent mark. And then for three of them, the ones that are circled in the black, we were close but not quite there. And so those are, families want to see more positive news shared with them, like positive things that are going in the, in the classroom and in the school. This year, they feel more disconnected than they have in the past, which makes sense with distance learning. And then families want to make sure that we're creating an environment that affirms students' identities. Next slide. So this then leads us to our three focuses for the year. Because for a functional partnership, action must be tied to the feedback to make sure that the families can see the impact of, of the feedback that they give. So the goals that we have for this year are highlighting the positive, creating community connection, and then empowering and affirming our students' identities. Next slide. So let's go ahead and take a look at the actions that we're taking to do these things. Next slide. For highlighting the positive, you can see on the left, that's a snip of our staff Google Classroom where teachers submitted what they're doing to highlight the positive in the classroom. And this ranges from everything, from picking several students each week and sending positive messages home and then rotating those throughout the week. To sending snail mail letters. Yes, some people still do that and it's really nice to get that card in the mail. And then we have our ego wings for our PBI system. We typically give out paper ego wings as a reward for positive behaviors. This year, we're giving out virtual ego wings that the students can go to our online store and buy items with. And then I've got this video of Ms. Krista Samboy, who is our preschool teacher at Indy. I want to play it for, I'll play part of it for you and Amy just like fifteen seconds of it and then I'll explain why I'm playing it.
Oh, hi friends, it's Safari Ms. Krista. I'm at my home having my favorite snack, cheese. This mozzarella cheese stick goes so nicely with a nice two percent.
Okay, Amy, you can stop it. So the reason that I played this video is the preschool is obviously aren't going to get the two percent joke. So what Ms. Krista Samboy is doing here is she's putting jokes into her, her academic lessons for the families to bring some, some happiness and some smiles to them while they're having to sit with their kids and do this work. And then at the full school level, next slide. So every Friday, we have a virtual assembly. A live virtual assembly. And one of the things that we do is teachers and staff members can submit their distance learning superstars for the week. And these are kids that are going above and beyond in distance learning. So they're coming to all of their live sessions, they're doing all of their independent work. They may be cheering on their classmates or sending positive messages and, and stuff like that. But so each week, I read their names and the reason why they were nominated, and then they get sent a certificate that they can print off and keep for themselves. That has the same language on it. We are also, you can click. Highlighting the awesome work that they're doing with our full school activities. So you can see collage of pictures that were submitted last week as part of the students' hybrid prep principal assignment. This assignment, they learned about social distancing and then submitted a picture of themselves with something that's six feet tall or six feet long, which they then use as like a mental image when they come to campus. They can remember, okay, I need to be my dad's length away from my friends. Go ahead and, next slide. For our second focus, community connection, before I go to the activities, I want to point out that the attitude that this kid has in this picture is the attitude that I strive for every day. Every time. But you can go to the next slide. And I have Christian and Ella here to talk about what their, their teacher is doing in their classroom to create connection. It's a little quiet, so you may need to turn your volume all the way up.
Student at Independent Elementary. I'm Ella. I'm also a student in Missson's class. Missson's always makes us connected to our classmates by asking parents to host classroom parties and even movie nights. And we also have a daily lunch and office hours called so we can hang out with our friends and ask questions if we need them. Recess is my favorite part of my day. The classroom even has a shutterfly site for photos so families can communicate with each other. Thank you for making Missson's family feel connected and supported. Let's continue the store.
Our future movie stars. And then at the full school level, we have community spirit activities. And so it's small, but you can see January all the way through May, and each week we have one or two activities that the kids can do. And the reason that we do these together is so families, no matter the age of student that they can have, they have something that they can talk about and connect with. So for example, next slide. Last week, on Tuesday, I believe it was inauguration day. So the, one of the, of the activities that kids did was they learned what inauguration day is. And then they submitted goals for President Biden and Vice President Harris for what they hope that they do during their tenure. You can see some of their goals in the background. They just plopped as many in there as I could. And I was really impressed by them. Like they submitted things about making sure that homeless people have food and shelter. They want to make sure that the beaches are clean. They want to make sure that we get the vaccines to people so that we can open up school. But they, they've got some really good ideas, future politicians on our hands. And then this week, you can go to the next slide. Yesterday was the one hundredth day of school, so we celebrated it by dressing up as if we were one hundred years old. This is a picture of what one of the kindergarten classes dressed up as last year. When they didn't have to be socially distant. And then if Amy clicks to the next picture, this is what they look like this year. Little bit different, but we're keeping that tradition alive, creating that connection. Nice. Next slide. If you want to see the full list of activities and explore that, if you go to Independence' website, we've got the spirit activities links right on the homepage. Nice, easy access. So I'll let you explore that if you want to. And we can go to our third and final focus for this year. You can click the next slide, which is empowering and affirming our students in who they are. And this is where the real deep work begins. At the beginning of the year, even before the survey, we started implementing the ADL or Anti-Defamation League's curriculum that Amy, Nia and Marion presented at a prior board meeting. But this curriculum starts with ground rules and creating a respectful environment where communication and discussion can happen. And then it goes into exploring themselves, who they are, who their family is, is, who their classmates are. And then it gets into some meteor conversations. So kids talk about what equity is and what inequity is, what is dislike versus prejudice. And these can create some pretty intimidating conversations, like conversations that are intimidating for adults to have with their own family, let, let alone with the students in their classroom. So one of the focuses that we're having as a staff this year. All CBUSD staff participated in the Mosaic Projects Professional Development in the fall. And then in the spring, we're lucky enough to have a Mosaic project mentor that's going to be working with us. And we're going to focus on, and this is the picture on the right. A list of potential topics, potential questions that we're a little bit uncomfortable with and coming up with ways to answer those or have those conversations in a respectful and inclusive way. So that's the work that we're going to be doing for the next half of the year. As a full school, you can click to the next slide. We tie this work into our No Place for Hate activities, which is an ADL or Anti-Defamation Certification Program. And this is our third year at Independent doing it, two years certified, and we're working for our third. This, the, the way that you get your certification is by doing different activities throughout the year that promote kindness and diversity and equity. And so one of the activities that we're going to be doing this year, you can click to the next picture. Is a virtual or a digital escape room where students are going to use the knowledge that they've learned in the classroom with that ADL curriculum to escape the digital escape room. It's a Google slide that they'll be able to go through. And then another activity that we're doing, you can go to the next slide. Is two weeks of kindness. In February, we'll be doing this. And so we've got activities all throughout those two weeks, starting with kindness cruise where families can decorate their vehicles with kindness quotes and come to Independent where they'll pick up some materials that they'll be using throughout the rest of the week. For example, on Friday of that week on the nineteenth, we're going to, at our virtual assembly, we're going to make friendship bracelets. And we'll be presenting those to another elementary school, which I'm going to keep a secret for now because I don't want to ruin the surprise. But then the following week, we've got spirit days where they dress up as different kindness themes. And they have a kindness checklist that they'll complete and they'll get to show up at our virtual assembly on the twenty-fifth. Next slide. And then in May, with our follow-up survey, we're hoping to see that families are noticing the changes that we're making and the impacts that their feedback is having on Independent. And now I get to my favorite part of the night. You can click to the next slide. We've got our student involuntary recognitions. For our students' recognition or student award this year, you can click to the next slide. We are honoring Jessica James, who is one of our fifth graders. Jessie is one of those people that truly lights up a room when she enters it. Her positivity and enthusiasm are second to no one, including adults, every adult that I know. And she holds a thirst for knowledge and motivation to one that impresses everyone. When I asked the Indy teachers to send their thoughts on why she should receive this recognition, I received paragraphs upon paragraphs from them, even from teachers that Jessie has never had. About what an amazing person that she is. But I thought the best person to sum up why Jessie should receive this award is one of her current teachers, Ms. Carson. If you click to the next slide, we've got a video of her.
Jessie more than deserves this award tonight. She is an amazing student. I've known her since kindergarten. Every year, she is such a hard worker, such a kind friend, and such an amazing student at Independent Elementary. This year, she has gone above and beyond, getting her work done, going to office hours, and being a leader for the other students in her classroom. We are so proud of her and so excited to see her bright, bright future. We're very proud of you, Jessie. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Jessie. And then for our volunteer of the year. We are giving it to Cesar Yasan. So Cesar was actually the first independent parent that I met. He was part of my interview panel. Which will give you a sense of the, the level of support that he's provided to Independent. Prior to my arrival, he was the vice president for the Indy PTA for two years and then became the president for the next two years. And during those leadership roles, he was supportive and responsive. When he was making decisions, he always thought of all students and strived, always strived for what was fair. He's got this unique gift of making everyone that he talks to feel understood and appreciated. And even in the toughest of situations, he's able to create a calm and positive environment. But the aspect of his leadership that really impressed me the most was even with his full-time job. And two, two students at separate schools, he was able to be on the independent lower block top every day to greet parents and field any questions that they have about the PTA. Last year, he took a year off from the board but was still just as active as before. And then this past spring, with an up-and-coming new president, he had a surprise nomination for VP. I swear it wasn't me. But he stepped up to support and took the role of vice president this year again. With his youngest child now in fifth grade this year, he's going to be moving on, but he's going to be thoroughly missed. Congratulations, Cesar. You do amazing things and I couldn't do this job without you. So that sums up my presentation. Thank you for having me. And I'll stay in the line.
Well, thank you, Patrick, and thank you, Independent. Are there board comments? I'll start with Lavender.
Mr. Hansen, it's always great to see you come. You bring that energy with you. I know you wanted to be that young gentleman. But you bring that with you every time and it, it's, it's quite contagious, I have to say. I, I want to thank you for what you're doing in regards to gathering data and gathering data from families. I mean, seventy-five percent, that's, that's a lot, a lot of participation. And the striving for high goals of eighty-eight percent, those are big goals and it looks like, you know, you did really great and you're looking at the gap areas. And those gap areas, as you said, are very important areas. And I want to commend you and your team for really weaving equity into that conversation. People have spoken up, they said it. And, and just them speaking up means that you're creating spaces that people feel more comfortable to speak up, saying that they don't feel safe. That's, that's a feat in itself. So I want to appreciate and thank you and your staff for all the great work you're doing in that area. We need it and we've got a lot more work to do. I want to congratulate Jessica, helping out younger students and really shining and being that sunshine. I say, you want to be that little boy. I want to be her when I wake up every day with that smile. And lastly, Cesar, you know, you've helped out so much in our community and we need parents like you and that can keep the calm and help everybody else feel welcome. So thank you so much for your support and thank you again, Mr. Hansen. Appreciate it.
Hi, Mr. Hansen Schmidt. Thank you so much for your wonderful presentation. I was laughing and laughing at the picture of the kindergartners dressed up as a hundred-year-olds because I guess hundred-year-olds wear animal print jackets now. But that was adorable and I couldn't stop laughing. I loved the pictures and the descriptions of your programs. Of course, equity is, is the thing that we are all working toward. And it's so wonderful to see how you've woven it into everything in your school and especially in this time when it's so hard to do all that. And I wanted to ask, I was very impressed at your very precise eighty-eight percent goal. And that you're doing another measurement in May. And do you have a goal for a percent increase that you hope to see in May?
So the goal is an end-of-the-year goal. So for seven out of the ten goals, we met it already. And then we're hoping that we meet it for the other three too.
Oh, well, that's awesome. Okay.
Thank you, Dot. Anyone else? Michael?
I just wanted to congratulate Jessica and Cesar. Or being a part of, I'm amazed by this independent community I've, I've learned about tonight. Mr. Hansen Schmidt, wow. The metrics that you brought tonight really demonstrates so much about your community and what your values are. And I think in the times that we find ourselves in, leading difficult conversations is really important and it seems like you're well-equipped to do that. And I, I just want to thank you for, for, for tackling that and doing it in a very thoughtful way. So thank you so much for all of your work there.
Thanks, Michael. Dolly, did you have something you wanted to say?
Oh, yeah, just a little bit. Independent Elementary is a really wonderful school and this was a beautiful presentation. I congratulate Jessica and Cesar. They seem like magnificent people. I was really nervous when I saw the teacher with the glass of wine there or the, it wasn't a glass of wine, it was just a glass. And then she poured the two percent. I'm like, oh, thank goodness. Very cute. That was adorable. Thank you.
Purveen?
Yes, I, you know. I just, I feel, I have said to Patrick already that I feel we are so fortunate to, that he came to Castro Valley. To have such a reflective, amazing leader in our community. And I know that he, along with the rest of our principals, work very closely together. And when you talk about data, they, every single principal's meeting, they spend time, we spend time looking at data. They spend time with their teachers and staff looking at data and it's just, it's just the thing they do. I, what I really love is how you commented about being, it's really about being responsive to the need. That this is the need and this is how we're going to respond. I love the video by Krista Sambo. She's an amazing teacher, by the way. She has the preschool and she actually is seeing children every week in person. We, we've just seen her good work all the time in the past as well. I love the, all the creative things that Patrick and his team and his community come up with, including the hundred-year-old, you know, looking like you're a hundred years old. But, and I want to congratulate Jessica for Jessica for her positivity. We need that. And I love how you take control of your learning. That is key in everything that we do as we, as you grow up. You have already started that. So that's great. And Cesar has always been welcoming. I remember that when he was a PTA president, always with a smile on his face, always very supportive and welcoming when we visited as well. So thank you, Patrick. You're doing an amazing job.
Thanks.
So Shane, did you have anything you wanted to add by chance? I don't want to ignore you.
I just echo everything that everyone has said and especially thank you for including that part in the presentation that you had the students give what they wish for with Biden's presidency, those things that gives me hope for their future. So thank you for including that and for giving the presentation and of course, congratulations to Jessica.
Yeah. So you know what? The problem with being last on the list is that most everybody has said everything so nicely already, but I will reiterate that I really admire what you're doing there. The innovation is terrific, the high standards. And the goals that you set are terrific. And certainly congratulations to the two award winners there, Jessica and Cesar. That's both sound terrific. So that's great. And I do have one suggestion for you and that is to take that list of items and actually send it to President Biden and, you know, maybe that'll give him some guidance or at least send it to Eric Swalwell and he'll pass it along to the president and so forth. But thank you very much for your presentation. We really enjoyed it. It was really very well done and I'm not surprised at all, but I'm always happy to see it and enjoy what you've done and the work that's going on up there. So thanks so much for being with us here tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move along now to reports from our two bargaining units. Do we have a representative from CSEA tonight?
I'm sorry, we skipped an agenda item, the video.
I'm sorry, I did. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I did. My fault. We do have the presentation of the winners for the classified staff. So sorry, Arvind.
Yes, I'm very excited to share this with you. We have a, Amy, thank you so much for putting this together and everyone for sending questions. She's made a video. We want to just share some of the pictures of our classified members who've been here since March, helping, doing work at the district level in, on school sites. And I can't thank them enough. Our hubs could not have started without them. All of the work that we are doing to prepare and our office staff welcoming, opening school, continuing to support everybody at sites and everyone at the district level, just kind of doing everything we can, they can to our classified members, everything they can to really get us in, moving in the right direction. So with that, let's watch the video. Thank you so much. I love all their smiles on their faces. Yeah, we, we are so lucky to have them and I just, you know, when I walk around or visit schools and see them with the smile on their face, always working so hard to support our children and our staff. So thank you, thank you. I wish we could be in person so we could actually see you and I wish we could actually get to a point where we can hug you, but we'll wait for that. So thank you.
Lavender?
I just want to really quickly echo the video and really thank the staff. I work in a site services organization. I know what it takes to keep things running and you run it so smoothly that people don't recognize all of the hard things that you're doing to keep it that smooth. So thank you for enabling education and enabling a safe space for our kids, parents and staff.
Yeah, I think a lot of times when we think about schools, we think teachers are the first thing that come to mind, but clearly we can't run a school without the classified staff. So they are extremely important and a full member of the team. So that was a nice presentation and we're glad to honor them. Dolly?
Yes, I just wanted to say something like in all the years that I was a teacher in Castro Valley Unified, the classified staff, the secretaries, the people, maintenance people, those people are just so important and just they help create the culture of the school and Castro Valley has just wonderful classified people. And I think the presentation shows that.
We're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and post it on social media.
Great. I, I won't be redundant. I just want to thank the classified staff. Y'all keep things moving. Thank you.
Yeah, Sherry, I was wondering if you had anything to say since you've made an appearance here.
No, we just wanted to recognize all the classified employees that have been working all summer and have come in every day and doing everything they can. And so we just wanted to recognize them.
Great. Thank you. Anybody else? Well, once again, thanks to, thanks for honoring the classified staff. They've earned it and deserve it. So now, since I made that mistake previously, we will move on to our reports from the bargaining units. And I wonder if there is a CSEA representative here today.
I do not see Robin on the call.
Okay, well, we can move on to see if there's if.
And I do not see Mark on the call either.
I don't think either were attending.
Okay, that's fine. Do we have any public requests to make public comments for items that are not on the agenda, Amy?
Yes, I do. I have one hand. Oh, sorry, two hands. First, I have Sarah Fetter and Connie Hill. Just give me one second.
We'll remind everyone that due to the Brown Act, we on the board are happy to listen to comments on items that are not on the agenda, but the Brown Act prevents us from discussing it or answering very much of a question or anything. So please don't be disappointed. It's not that we are ignoring you. It's just the law for open government.
I do. Sarah, are you on the line?
Yes, I'm here.
Sharon, welcome to our meeting.
Thank you. Good evening. I wanted to comment on two issues related to special education. First, I would like to bring up the issue of legal spending within special education. I have raised this issue many times and I am again asking that the school board request a detailed analysis of legal spending for special education in our district. I am asking that the school board take a close look at legal issues in special education and ask whether they are being handled in the best interest of the district and its students. This is an opportunity to reduce spending and develop collaborative rather than adversarial relationships with families. The second issue I would like to comment on is the Special Education Parent Advisory Committee that was recently formed. I'm concerned that there hasn't been any communication with special education families about the forming of the committee that is meant to represent their needs. I'm concerned that there was no opportunity for the public to review the plans for this committee and no opportunity to comment publicly on it. Transparency is a word that is often thrown around, but rarely seen in practice when it comes to special education in Castro Valley. I do not believe that an advisory committee made up of parents selected by the district is going to provide the district with the feedback needed, nor will it give all parents a voice. If Castro Valley is genuinely interested in improving special education and ensuring that all really does mean all, the school board trustees and district administrators need to listen to all voices and engage in some difficult conversations with all families. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. We will now mute you and welcome our next speaker. It looks like we have Connie Hill coming on. Welcome to our meeting, Connie.
Good evening, everyone. I'm actually one of your classified employees at the, at the high school, at Castro Valley High School, and I just wanted to say thank you for the lovely tribute that you gave us and the lovely words that you all had for us. You're right, we are often people who sort of fly under the radar. We're there, we do our job, we do it well. Well, and we don't always get noticed. So I just want to say thank you tonight for giving us well deserved recognition. All of your classified employees in Castro Valley do work very hard. And we do love our students and, you know, it's appreciated that when, when you recognize that. So thank you on behalf of myself and my fellow classified friends and and a dear friends that I work with.
Thank you very much, Connie. And thank you for all your work and service for the students here. So that's the only two that we had. So we'll move on to the next item, which actually is a five minute break for us. We've actually been going now for a little over two hours, so we appreciate the break. So we'll reconvene at seven, let's say seven fifty. Thank you very much. Well, welcome back. We'll start again. We'll move on to item nine. This is a consent agenda. It's an action item.
No, no, you go for it.
I'll overlook the consent agenda.
You guys could fight over it or something, maybe. So it's removed and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion or comment? Hearing none. Well, I have to call the roll, don't I? Hearing none. Well, I have to call the roll, don't I? I almost forget that. So trustee Whitaker.
Yes.
Excuse me, I've made another mistake there. I have to ask our terrific student for his preferential vote. Sorry, Shane.
You're good. Yes.
Thank you. Lavender, I got your yes. Michael?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Dot?
Yes.
I'll say yes, so that makes it five to zero. So we're moving on. Hopefully, we have our superintendent there somewhere.
Yes.
To item number 10. Thank you.
Here. Yeah.
And onto the roadmap.
Yes. Next slide. Just gonna update everybody. Again, thank you, Amy, for highlighting the latest and the greatest data on what's happening in the county. We're going in the right direction. So, next slide. And so I wanted to just share a few updates from the county health department first and then go into some of the updates I need to give you about what we are doing. So as you know, regionals, regional state at home order for stay-at-home has been lifted. So that's great news. Projections of hospital beds is improving. Our case rates are also dropping. We're kind of, what we're hearing is we are on the tail end of the winter surge, hopefully. But we must all stay vigilant as this isn't, this is really far from over. And next, you know, we don't want to let our guards down and end up back where we were. And again, continuing with that, they are allowing transitional kindergarten to second grade, are allowed to open based on county and state guidance once you are in the red for five days. The required COVID safety plan and state checklist, that's the checklist is the new thing that they have required us to have and will need to be posted on the state website five days before school reopens. It's basically kind of a summary of what we have. Vaccination, we do have a link in here, actually. If, Amy, if you could click on that link. Because I think if you go down a little bit, I saw, when I put the link in here, I actually saw a list of who's first, who's second, that whole guideline. So maybe while we're doing this, Amy can, and look it over and find, oh, there it is. I think it's called prioritization. If you click on prioritization framework, there you go. So basically, as you see, there are phases. There are four phases. Phase 1A, 1B, 1C. We are actually in phase 1B, we're included in phase 1B, which is, you know, essential workers, education and childcare. So, but just wanted you to see that there is information on this website about how this works, when this is coming up, and all of that. Let's go back to our presentation. What I am, back to this, the page we were on. Thank you. So we, we understand that we are in that phase and the plan has been updated. So maybe by mid-February, they would start with mass vaccination sites. And there's just a lot of logistics and details to be worked out. And one problem, as you have heard, is there aren't enough vaccines in California. And in our county, we have a lot of healthcare workers, more so than I think some other counties. Anyway, all of those things are in, in the works. I know that we have already put our name in and we have in our conversations with the county, with our county supervisor, Miley, as well as through our nurses and student services. We have, we are pushing to have to be a vaccination site, just like we do the flu clinic, to hopefully get our employees and the community and support the vaccination of people, not just our employees, obviously, after we're done with our employees, to open it up to everybody else. So that's where the vaccination piece is. Not clear, you know, guidelines or timelines yet. Next. So for us in CVUSD, we know, we've already talked about this, that schools in CVUSD are prepared to open. As you had mentioned, as we have mentioned, two weeks, right, which was what the guidelines were before. Open two weeks after the county is in the red tier, which hopefully will be coming up. And I put in parentheses adjusted to ensure smooth transition because, as I have said, you know, if it ends up being on a Thursday or when at the end of the trimester where they're just, they need two days to finish all of that work, that that would be what we are going to do. Phase reopening, so this is the phases. This is the, the way we're going to bring the students back TKK first, then 1, 2, then 3 through 5, and then, of course, secondary school later on. Our reopening safety plan has been completed. As you know, it's posted on our website and the county's website. Site-specific plans are posted and schools are doing a great job. Principals and staff are doing a great job preparing families with videos and information and all sorts of things. And our classified staff just helping to make sure everything is in place. Next. And so we have already been testing staff onsite and we are working on, we're actually piloting student testing. We are working, I know Ms. Chan worked with the company that's piloted, that's helping us pilot. And I believe they were looking for a school district that actually has hubs open at every school, and we were the only one in that group. And so we'll be doing that. Student testing will be implemented when we reopen with parent permission. And we have a tentative agreement with CVTA on reopening elementary school. That tentative agreement now needs to be voted on by CVTA members, and we are hoping that gets done this week. We are working with CVTA also to complete reopening MOU for secondary school. So that's the one that we're working on right now. Next. Or I believe that was the end of my presentation. Any questions? Comments?
Michael? Yeah, I have a few questions. I'm just hoping, if we go back to that first slide, just a point of clarification, I think it's just helpful for the public to understand that being in the red is seven, right, seven cases per 100,000. Is it the adjusted rate or is it the non-adjusted rate that triggers it?
No, actually, there are two things they look at. So, in fact, I think Amy checks this every day, and I love how she explained it to everybody. Last time somebody asked. So, and Amy, do you want to jump on and?
Yeah, so they look at both the overall test positivity, which is currently at the 7.7, and then also the adjusted cases, not the unadjusted. So if you look at the bar chart above, it represents the unadjusted, I'm sorry, the adjusted at 28.9. So that's what they look at. So currently, we're at 28.9 and 7.7. So we're technically in the red tier for positivity, but we're not overall in the red tier.
Yeah, and 25 is what they look at. So right now, we're 28.9. And at one point, if you remember, we were way lower. So.
Thanks for clarifying that. I had two questions about the testing. If you could just clarify something. What does it mean to pilot? I know what a pilot is. What's the scope of the piloting? And I'm curious with, as we go into testing, what if, what if families opt out of testing? What's, can they do that? So can we talk about that?
Yes, absolutely. We do need parent permission, and it's not an opt-out, it's an opt-in. In order to test, we cannot force children to be tested. It's not legal. But as far as pilot, it's because this company is actually, has tested students in college, but not in elementary schools and K-12 schools. So they're just making sure they work out all the bugs. The test is actually, I know that at Parent Leadership Council, I mentioned that the test would be, so for us, it would be once a month unless we actually have, what, what they have for the incentive grant at the state is if you're in purple. But we are not going to stay open in purple. So the, the test is also, I know they asked, is it the nostril one? And I, at that point, I did not believe that it was, but it actually is. But it's not the one that, that most of us have experienced as adults when you go to get your test outside. It's pretty, pretty easy and just like kind of the bottom part of your nose. So they're just piloting to make sure they work out all the bugs. We have to figure out how to get, you know, permission slips and, and get the results back to families and all of those kind of logistics and legal issues. And we're starting that this coming week.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Can I do a read it? Oh, okay.
Sorry. I'll just ask one final question. So, okay, we, we get into the red. Um, what happens? What, what gets triggered in our district? We have 14 days. Could we just open the doors tomorrow or does that, what do we do in those two weeks to get ready?
Two weeks? Well, we've been getting ready since August and March. So we just, honest, to be honest with you, um, we're ready. We have everything in place. The only thing right now we're piloting is the student testing, and that should be done. And, and we also have the testing that we have for adults. That same company also does testing for students. We're just trying to find different options. So within those two weeks, I think it's just time for families to kind of figure out all the, you know, the logistics for their children's daycare and all of that. And for us to make sure that our staff has enough time, our teachers need a couple of days also to just plan because they haven't been in their classrooms. Their classrooms are not set up. This would have happened at the beginning of the year, but since COVID, we were dealing with COVID, they haven't had a chance to do that. So just putting the last touches in, and that's why they said five days, but five days is a pretty short timeline. But we, we are ready. If, if, you know, when we go into red, we should be ready to do that.
Dot?
Um, I just wanted to say something about vaccines since I've worked the vaccine clinics for the county and touch on, on the complexity of vaccine distribution. First of all, I think our county, we, we don't have enough vaccines for everyone. The state of California only got 2 million vaccines for 38 million people. So that's one barrier. And as Parveen mentioned, we have a large number of healthcare workers in Alameda County, and so those are the first priority to be vaccinated. And we're still upbringing healthcare workers and behavioral health workers in to be vaccinated. And then suddenly, the governor opened up vaccinations for 65 and up. So that meant an influx last week. I don't know if any of you went to the library, but there was a line a quarter of a mile long for people to get vaccinated. So there's a lot of desperation in getting this vaccine. So these points of distribution or pods, as they're called, have, are basically trial runs while we're getting healthcare workers vaccinated. At the same time, there's a working group who's looking at equity, who's looking at accessibility, and where other pods, as well as max mass vaccination clinics will be. So there's a lot of moving pieces, and we're hoping that by mid-February, we'll be able to move into teachers, food ag, and, and those essential employees.
And I, and I think to your point, trustee Theodore, there was a lot of miss, just misinformation. People were sharing things like you can go get your vaccine. There's a line at the library, but not everybody qualifies. In fact, you know, some people had like links to sign up and, you know, they actually went to wherever they were assigned, and that was really for healthcare workers.
Right. And just a PSA, even if you have a link and even if you have an appointment, if you are not 65 and you are not a healthcare worker, you will not get a vaccine, even if you have an appointment. That just means that you took an appointment from someone who could have gotten an appointment. And the vet library is no longer doing walk-ups. So just a PSA.
No, thank you. No, thank you for, for that. And, and let's just cross our fingers. As you said, the most important piece also is we have to have enough vaccination, vaccines. So hopefully, things will get better.
Well, I agree that the numbers are encouraging. We hope that they're real. Even Fauci today was saying that he's starting to believe them. That's really good. And we, of course, we don't have any major holidays now, which were the, I think, the cause of the tidal wave of infections further through here. So we're just getting past that. You know, Parveen, also, when we start, not if, but when we start, is there still the staged or the, the phased, I should say, opening of elementary then higher grades and so forth?
Yeah, yeah.
It's still part of the plan.
Yes, absolutely. So first, we have to open TK2 and then the rest of the students before we go to secondary. Right now, the focus is really on elementary at this point, but we're hoping to get to that point. And, and that's why we have, we wanted to finish our MOU with the elementary first before secondary.
Amy, is there anyone who wants to comment on this?
Yes, we have one public comment from Amy Franklin Willis.
Okay, great. Welcome, Amy. Haven't seen you for a long time. Are you there, Amy? Hmm, maybe not. Amy, we'll give you another moment. Hope you're there.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, glad to hear you. Haven't seen you for a long time.
Hi, nice to see you. Thanks for letting me comment and so helpful to hear this particular presentation. For those who don't know me, my wife and I are parents to three Castro Valley Unified Kids. Our oldest is a CDHS class of 2017. Our daughter Grace is class of 2021 at CDHS, and our youngest is a freshman at CDHS this year. So tonight, I, I wanted to speak as a voice for the 692 families that have seniors this year. As this reopening conversation and planning begins to feel a little more real, for senior parents and senior students, the big looming event is graduation. And we have not yet had any communication from CDHS about planning for, for graduation. And we're three and a half months out. I attended these PTSA meeting last night and directly asked Mr. Torpey about what was, what was being planned. And the response I got was that CDHS had done graduation last year and that they would be in touch with families. And that is really not reassuring for us with kids who have missed their entire senior year. Class of 2020 got the majority of their senior year, though clearly missed out on the last part of it. And I think the graduation that was pulled off in two and a half months was extraordinary. And I know families that were so pleased. What I really, and I, there was a lot of activity on the Facebook page for parents of this class, this today, is we've got to figure out if we can only do what we did last year, we've got to do additional items. We've got to figure out as a, as a community, how to honor these kids and what they've accomplished and what they have persevered through this year. So I know that the board is not in a, in a capacity where you're going to, you know, be able to. I just am asking for all these families, you know, that want their kids struggle to be recognized. And I, I know that we may be right where we are by May, and so we may only be able to do. And so we may only be able to do the kind of distancing that happened last year, but we may not be. We may be in a different place and I want to be assured that there is planning so that if we are in that different place, we can execute. And then there's a whole community that's willing to help do that. And right now, we're not getting communication about how to help. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Parveen, do you have any comment on that that might be helpful?
No, other than, other than everyone's working really hard to get things done. And I am absolutely sure there will be, there is planning and there will be. And I I agree. I mean, these kids lost their entire senior year. So we will do everything we can. And we are also in, you know, in contact with other school district high schools. So a lot of that starts happening now. So I just want families to know it's going to happen. It's just that, you know, there are so many other things they, all the school districts were working on that now we're actually getting to that point where everybody's having those conversations. So absolutely.
Shane, did you want to say something there?
Um, as ASB school rep, I'm in our leadership class, I'm in charge of advising the senior officers. So I know as of now, they haven't made a plan, of course, with admin or anything for graduation. But based on where we are at with COVID, they're making different plans based on the tier. So let's say we're in yellow or better. We would love to have graduation with maybe one or two guests. If it's a little higher, maybe just graduation that has only the students in the stadium. And rather than going up to the stage, they just stand up. And if worse comes to worse, it'll just be a dragon like last year.
Dot, did you have your hand up? I wasn't sure whether.
No, I'm sorry. My son just came home, so I was waving.
Yeah, and I and I think I I want to make sure that the speaker knows we don't usually comment. It's not really appropriate, but I just wanted to make sure that, you know, there there will be planning. Things will happen. We just need to give staff a little bit more time as they're working with, you know, all of this and working with other districts and kind of figuring out the different options.
Amy, thank you for raising the issue and making us aware of it. We appreciate that. And I'm sure that Parveen and Mr. Torpey and Shane and his group will be working hard on this. So any other comments on this topic before we move on to our auditor? Nope. Well, I guess we'll move on to item ten B, which is our audit report for this year.
Yes, Ms. Chan will start us off.
Thank you. So, yeah, we're excited that we have our auditor here tonight to present a couple of audit reports to you. The first one is the two thousand nineteen twenty audit report. And you have in the packet a full report provided by Nigro and Nigro. Peter Glenn is the auditor who will be presenting, just giving you a quick overview of the report. And also, I will be able to answer any questions that you may have. So you should have received also a letter that came from Nigro and Nigro along with the with the report. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Peter.
Good evening, members of the board and cabinet. I hope everyone can hear me okay. First question everybody gets right on a Zoom call. But again, thank you for having us out tonight to present the report. And as Suzie mentioned, I'll be really brief and handle any questions that you have. So basically, our audit took, it started last year about this time, as it does every year. And of course, we we kind of went through radical change in in the conditions as our audit covered the July one twenty nineteen period through June thirty twenty twenty. So it it really changed some of some of the way we had to do some of our procedures. But in the case of your district, actually, we were really successful in getting out the district on a couple of occasions and be and were able to work, you know, in in the offices and work with everyone. And did, and although we used our our secure portal for a lot of our documents, a lot of it, we were able to, you know, handle out there in the field. So we really appreciate the district for working with us and making the audit run smoothly and really being able to issue the report. At this point in the season, you may or may not know, but the state actually allowed for reports to be filed all the way through March thirty-one this year. So we're very happy to have yours done at this point. So like every year, our audit had to be in conformance with general auditing standards, governmental auditing standards, the K three twelve audit guide, which is the state. And they dictate basically the format of the report, the types of schedules that go in there, what it needs to contain, compliance and all that. And then the uniform guidance, which is the federal piece and the the uniform guidance, the addendum to the uniform guidance actually came out in pieces this year. There was a part that came out in August and then September. And then there was one that even actually came out just before Christmas. So it was because of all the the funding, the unique funding from the CARES Act this year. So it was, you know, a different year for auditors as well as as everybody. But so our audit covered that that period. As you look at that report from June thirtieth, it's a snapshot in time, right? It basically tells you where you were as of June thirtieth. It covers the activity for the full year. But what it does provide, it provides an independent opinion on your financials. And our opinion, what is that, is an unmodified opinion, which means all the the information that's contained in your audit report is fairly stated. There's no misstatements that would materially affect the financial statement opinion. So that's a good thing. So you can basically move forward with those budgeted, you know, those budgeted expectations now moving forward from in all your funds and and be able to have confidence that, you know, this has been independently attested to. So we wanted to make that comment. And really, as far as highlights go for the district, those are those are mentioned on page three of the audit report. A little bit of information on there. I think the biggest, the biggest takeaway, at least financially, is the spending in the in the building fund. So a lot of capital outlay there, about twenty-eight point five, twenty-eight point six million, actually, in the expenditures in the in the building fund. So that's still seeing a lot of activity. And and hopefully, everybody will be able to get out there and enjoy those facilities, you know, in the coming weeks and months. I'm sure you're all looking forward to that. So I think that covers everything that I had meant to talk about when it comes to the district's audit report, so clean report. And again, we want to thank the district, Suzie, and also fiscal Tricia and fiscal for all their assistance through our efforts.
Well, thanks for that. It's always good to get a good, clean report and everything. And that's, of course, important for us to know that we're doing the right thing with the communities, funds and so forth. It's also good to hear that you had a good working relationship with the district, you know, that you guys worked well together and were able to get all that done. So we like to hear that, that things are working smoothly. Sort of not surprised to hear that, but it's all, it's always good to hear an independent outside person say nice things about our district. So did you have anything you wanted to add, Suzie, for example?
No, I'm just, we appreciate, you know, our auditors. Because we do, there are some changes. And so I know that Peter is one of those that I can call and 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 just kind of, you know, talk to about the changes, especially with the CARES Act funding. So we all know that that those, you know, who are restricted. And so we want to make sure that we're do, we're spending, you know, based on, you know, what's allowed per the federal government, government. Also, just be, we also want to thank, I know Peter mentioned earlier that Tricia, Tricia has played a big role in, you know, making sure that our financials and also just sending all of the reports out to to Peter and his team. That is really huge for us because, you know, we're not talking about, you know, a couple of pages here. We're talking about hundreds and hundreds of pages of documents. And so it's, it's a long, it's a, it's a long checklist. And so so we appreciate the work that Tricia and her team have done and also other departments too, because they're also involved in terms of looking at our unduplicated count that, you know, involves the child nutrition department as far as our free and reduced students. And then our ed services and regarding our, you know, our EL students and also our homeless. So so we appreciate everyone's work in getting this, and that two thousand nineteen twenty report. And it's like Peter said, it's it's a clean audit, which is, we're always happy when it's a clean audit, like.
Very.
Mr. Howard said.
Are there any comments for Mike?
Y'all are gonna think I'm crazy, but this was like the highlight of the board packet for me because he said to C F R two hundred. Um, in my day job, this is what I get. I work with this at the University of California. And I work with a lot of people at the Office of Management and Budget in my line of work. So it was really exciting to see those references and those costing principles. And I I don't know if people in the outside world really appreciate how those costing principles really impact. I do. So it was, that was really exciting. So, um, I thank you for for presenting us with this report. It 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 made, it was fun to read. So thank you so much.
Sounds like you're gonna be on my list to interview next year, I think, Michael.
Maybe. And I know the compliance supplements, in our line of work, we've been worried about the compliance supplements coming out and they were, they were quite large this year. And understanding how you deal with the CARES Act funding and the audit risk that we at at institution like UC or even for a public school, the real risk that we have to to think about. And it's been a lot of information to make sense of. So thank you for tackling it first.
Anybody else? Michael might be excited about it. I think for the rest of us, it's a little bit of a chore to go through it in all honesty. And we tend to turn all the way back to the findings page and try to get, and it's like reading the last page of the thriller novel to see what actually you had to say about us. But it obviously represents a huge amount of work. So thank you very much for that. This is an action item. To approve this audit?
I would make a prompt.
Thank you, Michael. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Dolly. Are there any other comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Trustee Whitaker. Pardon me, I gotta stop again. Shane, our student rep, your preferential vote, please.
Yes.
My apologies. Yes, thank you. Trustee Whitaker.
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Kuziyak.
Yes.
Trustee Adams.
Yes.
Vice President Theodore.
Yes.
Mine says, so it's approved five to zero. Thank you very much, Peter. Move on. We still have you, I assume, for item C, the bond performance audit report. So I'm glad to hear about that one as well.
Great. Thank you again. So this is specifically in regards to measure G, which is within the building fund, the most active part of the building fund. And so this this audit report deals with a financial piece and also performance audit. So it's a much shorter looking report. And but there is substantial amount of work that goes into it. So as you, as you look through that report, the reports on your your financial position as of June thirtieth of twenty twenty goes into the the spending of the year. And again, as I had mentioned in the other report, your capital outlay. So that's really reflected here in this particular audit. And so in this particular audit, we test the expenditures. We also test contracts, change orders and things of that nature. And then we make sure that, you know, if we run into any of those things, specifically change orders, you know, if there's substantiation, that there's a percentage allowed and board approval. And we make sure that contracts go out to bid, that, you know, they're they're being fairly bid. And so at the end of the day, with measure G, we didn't find any exceptions. We cited a few references to public contract code that we that we use to, you know, for some of our testing there in the last couple of bullets on on page fifteen. We tested about forty-five percent of the invoices paid quantity wise, twelve point eight million. And so again, in in all that testing, we didn't find any exceptions. And so we gave you a clean opinion and no exceptions on the bond measure audit.
Yeah, thank you for that. It's, once again, it's really a joy to hear that there are no exceptions, no findings. And this one's particularly important, although you say it's it's maybe smaller than the other audit. But nevertheless, the community entrusted us with a lot of money. And we really enjoy hearing that an outside opinion that we are actually spending it appropriately and keeping a good track of it. So thank you for that. Are there any comments by anybody on on the bond audit? Parveen, did you want to have any comment about the auditing overall?
No, I just have to say I am so grateful to have such an amazing team. I was gonna say, when Peter was talking about the availability of our staff, that's because they've been on site since day one, since March. And that probably isn't the case everywhere. So it makes it a lot easier. And then we've got just awesome people in charge, Suzie and Trish and all of their team, the business division. Thank you.
It's terrific. So thanks a lot. This again is an action item to accept.
Approval of the audit report for the bonds.
Thank you, Lavender. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to a vote and I'll ask for Shane's preferential vote.
Yes.
And trustee Whitaker.
Yes.
Trustee Kuziyak.
Yes.
Trustee Adams.
Yes.
Vice President Theodore.
Yes.
And my vote is yes. So that is also approved five to nothing. So thank you very much, Peter. We appreciate your help with all of this. And I think it's great that we have such a great partnership in going over this and completing this task. It's really important to us to to do it. And even if you were to find negative things, it would still be important for us to know that. But I'm really pleased that you didn't find any. So that's terrific. So thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night and stay well.
So we'll move on to item ten D, the bond financing program overview.
This is an exciting presentation that Suzie's gonna lead us in. It's it's a bit long, but I think the information in it is really, really important for us.
Yes, so we do have a presentation for you tonight. This is information in preparation for our upcoming bond sale. As you know, our measure G, which is the audit that we, that Peter Glenn just reviewed. We, this is now, you know, we're looking at selling for the last series of our measure G bonds and this year's fee for thirty-three million dollars. So Blake from K and N Public Finance will go through the presentation. He will give you highlights on where we are as far as our outstanding debt summary, the assessed value, as well as a couple of refundings. And he will go over that, one of one being the Geo, Geo bond. And also the other refunding is the certificates of participation. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Blake.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me okay? Okay, great. Well, it's it's always nice to follow when we're talking about the next phase and really final phase of measure G. It's nice to follow a presentation from the auditor that everything has been spent well and has gone well associated with the measure G. Really, this is an information discussion tonight in advance of what we're currently planning to bring as an action item next month on the tenth for the board to consider approval of the final series of measure G bonds. And so I have some information just to. And so I have some information just to share, you know, leading up to that board meeting. Suzie, what's the best? Should I just tell you when to move to the next slide or?
Yeah, just say next slide.
Next slide, please. So just as a starting point, a quick review of the district's overall bond program where community members have approved three bond measures over the last nearly twenty years authorizing one hundred and eighty-three point eight million. The two thousand and two being the oldest measure and two thousand and five measures have all since been issued. And money spent really with measure G being the active program where out of the hundred and twenty-three million dollars authorized, the district has currently sold ninety million, leaving thirty-three million left to be sold. And that's what we'll be focused on for today's discussion. The table at the bottom just summarizes all of the different series of bonds that are currently outstanding. And you can see there's only the series A and B of measure G outstanding in the amount of just over seventy-five million. And everything associated with the two prior measures has since been refunded for purposes of generating taxpayer savings. And we're gonna talk about that a little bit tonight, too, as it relates to an opportunity to save additional monies for taxpayers. Next slide. And then also, just as we get started, just as a, as an update, some board members may know this, others may not. But the county has released the latest assessed value for the district, the twenty-twenty-one A V. There continues to be extremely strong A V growth. This last year, the district reached over nine point six billion, by far the largest valuation the district has seen in history, and that represents over a five percent growth year over year. You can see in the graph kind of how each annual growth is represented. And then the table at the very top looks at incremental growth trends in a five, ten, fifteen, twenty and twenty-five year term. And you can see, just focusing on the longest term, the twenty-five year, the district having had annual growth on average of five point three five percent. So you know, absolutely a benefit as it pertains to general obligation bonds. And I'll point out that when measure G was passed, the growth assumption was a very conservative three percent. And so when we see the strong growth that the district has had, the result is a lower tax rate that taxpayers are actually paying than what they authorized. Next slide.
I think we're having a little trouble with our speaker. At least I am.
Can you hear me okay, Suzie? Next slide. Yeah. Yeah. Can you guys hear me okay?
We can hear you now. Yes.
I think he keeps going in and out.
Yeah.
Okay. And so quickly, I know that everyone most, most folks on this meeting know the great accomplishments that measure G has had. And we wanted to highlight them here before we look at the next phase and just look at what the series A and series B issuances have accomplished. Again, that was, it had a fifty-three million and thirty-seven million amounts for the bond sale. Both sales are aligned in terms of their final maturity, which is twenty forty-six. I've already mentioned the three percent annual growth rate. And then really, the nicest thing, I think, on this slide is the pictures down at the bottom and simply just what's been accomplished. We're talking about the building four hundred at the high school. Modular buildings that were installed at the adult and career ed location. And then a variety of projects at the district's elementary school sites. So really some great flagship projects that have been accomplished already through measure G. Onto the next slide, we'll start focusing really, which is the last series of measure G bonds to be sold in the amount of thirty-three million to address ongoing and current capital facility projects. This bond issuance is structured really mirror what the series A and so it will have a we're aligning it again with that twenty forty-six, five and three percent annual A V growth assumption. And in the, and you can see in the graph in those gray bars, definitely representative of the debt service for the series C issuance and how when it's stacked along with the series A and B, where the ultimate tax rate is expected to remain, which is right about dollars per hundred thousand. So notably less than what voters approved, which was sixty dollars per hundred thousand for measure G. And then some of the, some of the assumptions, we remain in a low interest rate environment. So the sale is expected to generate a borrowing cost of under two and a half percent. We're currently estimating about two point three seven and correspondingly a very low overall repayment ratio of about one point four to one. So are there any, are there any questions? I'll pause there on the series C issuance structure and concept for the new money sale that's being planned.
Um, no, but I do, I do want to say, I think it's really important for everyone to hear that. If you go back to the, the page before talked about our, our credit rating. And all of the things that you were talking about, that we've been talking about, all count when we go out to sell our bonds. You know, how stable the district is and the fact that the prices of homes have gone up continuously. And the page that you were on, I think it's really important when we were, you know, talking to our community about passing the bond measure and we were saying sixty dollars per hundred thousand, the fact that it's actually not sixty per hundred thousand, I think is, is another indication of, of how well it's going. And I remember when we sold our last bonds, it was, it was just really great to see so many people interested that day.
Mike?
Yeah, I just so when I look at the schedule here, is this telling me when we issue the bonds, we're gonna get like a big check for like thirty-three million bucks to do the things that we need to do? And then each year, we're obligated to pay those amounts back from our general funds, right? That's what that's telling you.
That's correct. It's, it's, it's a repayment of that borrow, it's a borrowed money, the thirty-three million borrowed from future property tax payments. And that borrowing will, will consist of a twenty-six year term. And you can see how incrementally the borrowing is paid down along with the interest costs associated with borrowing.
And we could also assume over time that our budget's probably growing in some ways in relative dollars, right? So.
Yeah, but Michael, it's not paid back from our general fund and has nothing to do with our budget. It's paid back with property tax. Yeah.
Sorry.
Just wanna be clear.
Thank you for clarifying. Sorry.
No problem. Do you have any other question, Mike? Is that, was that it? Okay. Thanks. Blake, go ahead.
Thank you. And Superintendent brings a great point, just as it relates to the implementation throughout the measure G program, which is really representative of strong fiscal stewardship and securing and managing the district, securing strong ratings and securing the lowest possible cost of borrowing. So along those lines, if we move to the next slide. Can everyone hear me okay? Okay, move to the next slide. We find ourselves in a very low interest rate environment. District staff, along with the bond financing team, have been evaluating potential refinancing opportunities in an effort to generate further taxpayer savings. And if you bring your eyes down to the bottom right, you can see just how low relative to the last twenty years, our current interest rates are at compared to prior year. And so with this very low interest rate environment and being near historically low interest rate levels, we see that there's a series of bonds, the two thousand and twelve refunding bond. So they've already been refunded once. Coming up as a, a strong and viable refunding candidate that can generate what we are currently estimating to be over five hundred and seventy thousand dollars of lower interest cost for taxpayers. And the way that that's generated is the, the average borrowing cost or interest rate on those outstanding bonds is about four point nine two percent. And we compare that to what we're currently estimating the interest cost would be on a refinancing at about one point three one percent. And so with that lower cost of borrowing, it reduces the annual amount taxpayers would, would pay in interest. And there, and that's what's generating the five hundred and seventy thousand dollars worth of savings. Now, to the point made earlier, general obligation bonds are not paid for nor associated with the district's general fund. And so the savings would be directly for taxpayers. There is no fiscal impact to the district whatsoever. I'll pause there and see if there's any questions regarding the general obligation refinancing or refunding bonds.
Yeah, Suzie and I, Suzie and I were talking about the fact that why this is just the right time to do this. If, when we bring it back, the board approves, is each time you go out to refinance, obviously there's a cost. So this time, it actually, you know, since we're doing it at the same time, it's, it's working to our benefit. So if you want to say anything about that, Suzie?
Yeah, yeah. So that's like what you, Mr. Mahdi said, just looking at you selling the bonds, your series C that Blake uncovered and also with this refunding opportunities for one of our Geo bonds. And then I know that he's gonna cover the last page, which is the C O P, is doing it that altogether, maybe there is a benefit to us in terms of the, doing it all at the same time rather than one at a time, just because of the cost of issuance and all of the other costs associated with going through this process. And so I know that, you know, Blake has worked on making sure and also the rest of the team, right? We have a couple of underwriters and also our bond counsel to make sure that the cost of issuance is, you know, at the minimum. Like, you know, we try to make sure that, that we're not spending or, or, you know, any, any, any other costs that's associated, it's at the, as a minimum. So, and that's what we're trying to achieve for all of these refundings as well as the bond sale.
Got it.
I didn't actually have a question. I just felt like it needed to be said again, that it's great that we have an opportunity to to do this at no cost and save our taxpayers some money. So thanks.
You know, I will also say that we've done this a couple of times in the past few years and saved actually more than this. This is a half a million dollars roughly, which is very good savings. But I think in the past, it's been multiple millions that have been saved from the, that the taxpayers in Castro Valley do not have to pay.
Yes.
Remember like seven million or something like that.
And, and a couple of things that I'll point out relative to the amount of savings that we're currently estimating. The amount of savings is direct, directly related to the amount of bonds that can actually be refunded. And so right now, you know, we're looking at, there's, there's not a large amount of general obligation, general obligation bonds that can be refunded. The amount, as you can see in this table, is just under seven million dollars. And so the, the currently correspond that amount of bonds that we could refund.
Yeah, Blake, I wouldn't want you to think that I don't appreciate the half a million. I think that's terrific. And it's really good that we've got that, those other bonds down so far. You know, they're almost paid off. So that's the reason it's not a very, it's as big as it has been in the past. But all of that's good news. So thanks.
Yeah, I would echo that sentiment and you know, board leadership have really represented what it means to be strong fiscal stewards of taxpayer dollars. Not only what we're currently discussing as a twenty-twenty-one financing effort, but what's been done and asked as well.
I think, excuse me, Blake, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I think Dolly has a question for you.
Okay.
Oh, I don't have a question. I just wanted to say that I think it is really, really good that you're passing, that we're able to pass the savings on to the Castro Valley taxpayer. I think that's a terrific thing.
Yeah. Great. Thank you.
So moving on to the next page and aligns of taking advantage of the low interest rate environment. There is also an opportunity through this multi-series financing to actually benefit the district's general fund by refinancing the outstanding two thousand and eleven certificates of participation that were, that were originally sold for the construction and installation of solar energy generating facilities at certain school sites. Now, these, these bonds are directly tied to the district's general fund and were originally sold as a way of reducing the annual energy cost burden on the general fund. And that's what substantiated the, the process to move forward at that time. Now, any reduction in costs that we can realize now is just an added benefit. We already are seeing the impact of the energy facility savings. And by reducing the cost now, we are estimating that the general fund can save over the remaining life of these bonds approximately a million dollars. And so again, relative to the size of bonds that can be refunded, which is under five hundred, I'm sorry, under five million dollars, we're talking about saving in interest cost alone about a million dollars, which is quite significant. And so the table to the right really breaks down how those savings equate on an annual basis over the remaining life of this repayment term. So it's not a million dollars all in one given year, but we're talking about in the range of eighty to ninety thousand dollars a year as a benefit to the, to the district's general fund, which is quite sizable. And the way that, similar to the Geo bond refinancing, the way that we're able to capture the savings is by refinancing the existing bonds, which have an interest cost of about four point nine one percent and reducing it down to what's available in the current market, which we are estimating at about one point five three nine percent. So a significant reduction in interest cost.
Parveen, did you have a comment or question?
Yeah, I, I think this is, it's really important that people see the distinction between this and a Geo bond. Because this was basically in two thousand and eleven, I know we have some, a couple of new board members in two thousand and eleven in order to actually building the, the solar panels and all of those, we had to, the district had to borrow money and, and pay with interest. So that was about ten million dollars. And now, I mean, this is huge savings and this is actually general fund. But what I also want to mention is, as you walk around now through measure G, I just have to say, I am so proud of our team. Because there are solar panels going up where for, to make shade. And all of that, none of that we have to borrow money for. We're actually using measure G as we Measure G as we were supposed to and also applying for all sorts of things that we qualify for. For energy efficiency and things like that. So I just wanted to give a give a shout out to Suzie and Sharon and their team.
Michael.
Why is it called a certificate of participation? How is, can you distinguish that for me compared to a bond?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So a cert- certificate of participation is a form of non-voter approved debt that is available and widely used by school districts throughout the state. So it it's far different than a general obligation bond that's approved by voters and repaid by property taxes. A COP or certificate of participation is of of financing or borrowing that a school district can execute to move forward with various capital facility projects or or other uses as solar facilities as well. That is repaid by the general fund over the period of time. And it's quite a complex structure in terms of form and documentation. It's a, it's a lease facility structure where the district actually puts up one of its existing facilities to a corporation and then leases that facility back in the form of annual lease payments, which in in essence are the debt payments. And so you'll see the different set of documents that are provided to the board at the March agenda, which will be far different for the COPs than they are for the geo bonds. And going back to the point that was made earlier, the reason that this is being brought forward in a multi-series multi-financing type structure is solely for the opportunity to not only capture low interest costs in the current market, but also from a cost savings perspective, there's a tremendous economies of scale by going through this process all at the same time for all of these financings. And so while I'll apologize in advance that the agenda items next month are going to be, I think there's going to be more than one and there's going to be a variety of documents associated with each. There's a rationale for it. And hopefully through the course of this presentation, the board gets a better understanding of that rationale. And benefit.
Yeah, could I, I'd like to make, that's great. And I think it's terrific that you're working this out. But I do want to make one other point about the solar panels that were put up some years ago. And that is, they cost us in financing about three hundred thousand plus dollars a year. But that is offset by the fact that we're off the grid at a number of campuses. So in a strange way, even though we have to pay three hundred thousand out of the general fund, we have saved around four hundred thousand out of the general fund for reduced energy costs at all those campuses. But the fact that you're going to reduce it through this mechanism by another fifty to eighty thousand dollars a year is really pretty amazing, I think. So I'm really interested in seeing what you've got next month. I think that'll be, that's really exciting. Arvind?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'm so glad you said that because I I think when, at one point, I can't, it wasn't this year, but I think last year, we were looking at something and I think Suzie had a chart showing how much we are saving with solar panels that we had and now how much more we would be saving with the solar panels. And again, remember, now we have added a whole bunch of air conditioning systems all over the place. So there, we had to think about that. So I I think it's a really, really smart move. It was a smart move when they did it. And it's, it's now, you know, we don't even have to really borrow money to do that. You know, just separate from what we have already have. So, but Trusty Kuziak's question is a, is a great question because everyone says, what, what, why do they call it certificate of participation? What are we participating in? It's just, you know, it's it's a loan.
So so the last bit of information in this presentation is just the tentative financing timeline looking forward. And following this evening's informational discussion, we would plan to submit and bring back and oh, Suzie, you got that, you got the schedule updated. Thanks so much. I I was jotting down notes here to to correct this. So on February tenth, the board will have an opportunity to consider approval of each of these different financings as they have their own respective benefit and uses. And following it, should the board authorize the financings, we would look to post the official statement or preliminary official statement, which is kind of like the prospectus of these bonds to the investor community. And we're we're actually delaying doing that to make sure that we have the latest and greatest financial reports available to the marketplace. And so while the district is considering approval February tenth, we would actually wait until March eleventh to post the preliminary official statement, which would then put us in a position to secure interest rates on March eighteenth and close the transaction on April first. When we close the transaction, the Measure G proceeds, the thirty-three million will be deposited and available for future facility projects. And the respective escrow accounts to refinance the old bonds will be funded. So those bonds, in a sense, will be off the district's books. And the new lower cost interest bonds will now be really what the district and taxpayers would be paying moving forward.
Between now and then, there are lots and there's a lot of work that Suzie does. There's also, there's some meetings that Suzie and I have to attend to. You know, to speak about our school district and and why we're, you know, it would be great for people to invest in us.
Any other questions for Blake? Comments? Well, Blake, you know, I have to say terrific presentation, lots of good news, I think, and actually quite exciting. You know, I usually say that about financing things, usually not that exciting, but this is actually really good news.
And Blake can come, Blake, you can come here next time when you present so you have better internet.
Yes, I, I'm so sorry for the, for the choppy internet. But I would love to, I would love to go there and see all you in person. I can't wait.
We all suffer from that choppy internet. Okay, bring that person on, please. Welcome, Yoko. You're still muted, though. Yoko seems to have disappeared.
Must have been an accident, then.
Yeah.
Oh. Okay, so there's no one else who wants to speak out there in the public?
No, that was the only public comment.
Okay. Nothing, anything else from the board? Well, once again, Blake, I think a very good news presentation. So thank you very much for waiting through most of our meeting to speak to us and we look forward to hearing from you at our next meeting.
Thanks so much. Have a great night, everybody.
Thank you, Blake. Okay, move on to an update of our Measure G projects. Sharon, welcome, Sharon.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Here of all of our reports, we from the audit, the bond performance report to the bond financing sale, and now it's the Measure G. So just to give you an update on where we are, what we've been doing the last, the last time, since the last time you here presented. And so again, we're really happy to have Sharon with us tonight to present. And also just congratulate the team for doing an amazing job with, you know, the audit with all of the documents that were submitted to our our auditors for review. And so, so again, as was presented earlier, a clean audit. So I want to thank Sharon and their team for doing such an amazing job. And so and the work will keep going with a thirty-three million dollars more of of funding for for construction projects, so.
Sharon? Yes, I wanted to start. Yeah, thank you for, everyone, for all your support. I think it's, it makes it so much easier to do work. So Amy, next slide, please. I know I'm the last presentation, so I'll also try to keep it brief, too. So, you know, just an update of what we've been doing. We have CVE, our library, you know, for all our classrooms, library, science spaces, we've been going through, you know, a few of them on each site over the last four years now, doing renovations. So with the interior renovations, you know, just a sample of what we do, interior painting, new flooring. So we generally try to put carpet into the libraries. And this is actually a newer material where it's more of a rubber flooring with a fiber on it. So it's, it doesn't, it actually keeps the moisture in there. It doesn't let it seep into the subfloor. We go and repair the ceilings. We've gone and done LED lighting and window film on the windows for reflectiveness and safety. And we've gone through and done the HVAC and next slide, please. Another shot of the library. And, you know, so next, please. And then for the multipurpose room, we also go into the floors. This is an LBT floor, luxury vinyl tile floor. We also do the the window blinds in the library and classroom two. And here in the multipurpose room, if you look on the blinds, we actually motorize them so that it can be kind of moved up and down if they have performances or have like movie or something that they're showing for the kids. New painting and next slide. So, you know, we've talked out with the COP and the soul, the existing solar that was at three of the sites. We have been actively putting new solar that's at most of the elementary schools. And this helps to offset the operation costs for all the new AC. So we really looked at how to efficiently spend the bond funds, both with our first cost and also looking at operation costs and whatever we're putting in, like for solar, making sure that, you know, we are conscious that there's general fund dollars that we'll spend to operate the new AC and also flooring, that we choose a floor that's very low maintenance, that it's before operations, they don't have to wax it. And also in terms of use of spaces, we look at where are good spaces within the school and the site to put things like that to get a multi-use out of them, that we're, you know, reaping benefits of solar power. But wherever we can, we try to put in area that also doubles as a shade structure. Like this one's on the side of the playground at Castro Valley Elementary. So next slide. Independent, this is actually one of the spots that we weren't able to find like a dual purpose on. So this ended up being a ground mount. That's kind of way on kind of the side of the hill behind the portables. But what we're able to do, if we couldn't make a multi-use out of this, that we save some money in terms of the structure. So like if we didn't have to put it on some beams and columns, we can save some money. And so we do that. And it's out of the way. And this, you know, you really don't see it too much unless you're really we had, you had to go and get that shot pretty well. So next slide.
I'm, I'm just curious, how do you make sure people don't climb on it?
Oh, it is fenced. Yeah, this is, this is not an area that is supposed to be open to the public. Let's see, moving on. So this slide's for independent. Also, another shot of what we do for the multipurpose room, similar to CVE. This is before we put down the floor, so that we've, we've ripped out the old floor. We've done, sometimes we have to do a moisture barrier. This is the leveling compound and prepping the floor for the new tile that will go on. And they've already repainted. So next slide. Some more solar. There's, there's a bunch of solar here. We've been able to finish most of them that we're just waiting for the final connection with PG&E. So Jensen, that one, we were able to put on the side of the field, between the field and the schoolyard. Next slide. Proctor also. And wherever we can, we look at also with the site, if they might want to come back and either gain more of asphalt space for their yard, under the shade, I mean, under their solar slash shade. Or just keep it as grass. So that's something we look at with the site, too. Next slide. And some of the classroom interiors. So this is classroom sixteen through twenty. Times the same kind of flooring, window blinds, painting, ceilings, lights that we've done. And and we, what we've done also is try to standardize the materials that we picked. So you've probably seen the same floor throughout a lot of the other pictures, is that we also want to make it easier later if there is some maintenance cost that's like, oh, this is the color that we use for all of our sites. And, you know, for paint, for floor. And then even on the exterior painting, we try to keep it to a certain number of colors, so it's easier for maintenance later. Next slide. And with the interior work, we also worked for these particular buildings at Proctor. We hadn't really looked at the drainage issues that was around because there's a lot of water intrusion that were were seen and also like the the users had told us about. So we spent a lot more time in looking at what needed to change and reworking the landscape and the drainage and moving water away from the building as we look at, you know, what what we need to do to repair any dry rot or, you know, any of the work that needs to be done. So this is kind of us trying to dig down, removing a lot of the dirt that's around because some of the drains were like trying to move uphill against gravity and it's hard for water to do that. So next slide. And it starts to, as we clear, you know, we create what they call the drainage swales, like this concrete V ditches that they're pouring. The old ones are starting to crack with a lot of the tree roots that were getting into it. So we're redoing a lot of those. And we did have to take a couple of trees down. We tried to leave as much as we can. Worked with the site on that. Next slide. Then Marshall, we repainted next year of the multipurpose room. And we did the interior last year. So next slide. Stanton, we, this is next year painting. So we've done multiple schools at this time. So working on Stanton and a similar in colors, I think that this is the kind of same red as Canyon with the next slide. So then a couple more shots of the campus and the painting that's in progress. The next slide. And with this, we also like with the the glass block that's on kind of the upper stories of some of the classrooms here, we looked at repairing and sealing those as we're working on the exterior. So not just painting, we look at like whatever is in, that needs to be repaired or that's damaged. We work on like fixing everything as we're making everything look pretty. Also, so next slide.
But you're not removing them, right?
No, but what they had was, they had this plastic, like plexiglass over them. And we removed it and looked at what was the issue and then sealed it. So it's not as much of an eyesore. So the knowing, this is kind of the side of the track. This is where we're So Vanoy, this is kind of the side of the track. This is where we're putting in or the solar. So just kind of a shot of during construction of them working. Next slide. And then this is just some paving, asphalt paving and concrete work that we did in front, in the front lot of Vanoy and expanding kind of the sidewalk, that upper right, upper left picture, kind of the strip of walkway that leads to the front. We expanded that a little bit just so it gives a little more room for the kids when they're back. Next slide. The interior of the multipurpose room, similar to the other ones. And next one. And lastly, for the high school, we've, we've kind of gone and done some painting. This is the side of the library. So just kind of going around and seeing what needs to be done and kind of taking care of those things. And next one. So we get to kind of finally our financials. I mean, we've been, we've been talking about financials with the audit and the refunding. So this is kind of us to date as of December thirty-first. Column, this, I usually show this one pager of just a very general overview of how we're doing in the program. And column A is all of our expenses to date from beginning of time till end of December. And we've, we spent eighty-five point six million. And column B, encumbered, is how much we have in contracts right now. And that's about seven point nine million. C is our furniture budget. So there are specifics and implementation plan on the furniture and the technology. And those two columns in C and D are broken down. So furniture, that's what's left. We've done a big push this in the last year to get the twenty-first century furniture and working with the schools to develop the standards and see what they really need. So this is actually what's left over. A lot of it's with the high school and the middle schools because we're rolling that out slowly versus the elementary schools have, have done most of their furniture. And there might be a couple of sites that decided to do like maybe a two-phase. So that's what's left in furniture. And technology, we have actually done pretty much most of our technology upgrade at this time. So this column D is actually have a breakout of the, from expenses. So from column A, this is specific, like four point one million has been spent on technology, which is really the infrastructure with upgrading our data, networking, all the cabling, all the switches, the fiber that goes to our server rooms and our wireless access points. So that's what that expense is. And E is kind of our total remaining budget that we're working with at this point. F is our total budget. We can kind of add everything up. That's the hundred and forty-nine point two million. That's kind of what we have as our, our kind of full capital improvement budget. And we have column G and H are the percentage completed versus the percentage remaining. And I think we're pretty on target for all of the different schools. And currently we're still on budget. And the next slide, please, that'll be our final slide. I wanted to have revisit like where our one forty-nine million is because our bond is a hundred and twenty-three. You know, that's what voters have voted on. But the whole capital project or program, as we'd say, our building program, comes together from a lot of different building funds. We have our Measure G, which is, you know, bulk of the money. But we also are, been working very heavily on maximizing our state funding and reimbursement. And Prop fifty-one passed about the same time. And so we've been able to get in line for eleven point four million from the state that we are expecting in this next few years. And we've been able to get Prop thirty-nine, which is energy savings funds. And we have our developer fees that we have some that we've used for the wellness center. And we're projecting more that's coming in. We have a routine restrictive maintenance that is, comes from the general fund budget every year. And then one twenty-two, one zero and three, thirty-five, really, that is our existing building funds. What I also wanted to highlight, so all that, you know, adds up to the hundred and forty-nine million. And that, you know, I want to highlight that we are always kind of looking at what additional funds or grants and state funding we can get. So we are looking at another, at least twelve point two million beyond the Prop fifty-one because we know that we are prepping, the state is prepping for another state, another state bond in twenty-twenty-two. And that is my presentation. Any questions?
Any questions or comments? Dot. And then Lavender.
Thank you. Um, that was, I really appreciate that presentation, Sharon. It was very thorough and I loved seeing all of the pictures of all of the campuses. And I also wanted to comment about how appreciative I am of the thoughtfulness that went into the solar panels and, and multi-use of those shade, S shade structures to power the HVAC systems that were put in. You mentioned the Prop fifty-one funding, probably. Or you said something that didn't sound like we were for sure getting eleven million dollars. So can, can you talk about that a little?
Oh, no, we are getting the eleven million.
Okay, okay. Maybe I misheard you. It sounded like it wasn't a sure thing. And I just wanted to make sure that we weren't going to be on the hook for eleven million dollars.
Oh, no, that is a, that is a sure thing. It is, it is just a matter of time the state processing our application and reimbursing us.
Okay, then I probably just misunderstood you. Thank you. It made my heart skip a beat a little bit.
Yeah, but, but I think it's important to remember, remember, there was a bond on the last, in November, that didn't pass. That was another one that we were hoping for. And now there may be another one and other opportunities. So that's besides the eleven million. So there, we, when it comes up, we're going to really have to do our part to support it. So that if it gets passed, then there's more opportunity for us to ask for more than what we have. So, and maybe it's when I was talking about the, the last line on the twelve point two million because I mean, they're kind of close. Because that is how the state program works is you continue to submit applications of the project. So we take a project that we're doing, like the one hundred building was like two million dollars. So we take that, we submit it as an application. So we spent two million dollars on the high school for this. And, you know, we have eligibility. We want to stand in line for funding. And the state continues to take applications even after they've exhausted their bonding authority. Even it goes into another pot, but you kind of, you just stand in line until the coffers replenish. So that, you know, that is application we're working on and that we're getting into the state. So that it's just a matter of when that next bond passes, then that will come. It's just, that is kind of more so, we don't know exactly which year that will come. Like the first eleven million, we've been able to kind of plot out like based on the OPSC is the agency that's processes that based on how many applications we see them working on, like we think we're going to get the money in like a year and in two years and in three years.
Lavender.
I just wanted to comment on the continued commitment to sustainable principles and the way that you're planning out the Measure G projects. I don't know how many of you saw today that President Biden came out stating that global climate change is, you know, something that's damaging us and that we need to work towards it. And I'm really honored to be at a district that's already working on it. I mean, from reducing impacts to the film that we're using to energy efficiency lighting, to, you know, even thinking about the, the paint colors that we're using that are consistent, that's going to reduce using more products or having to manufacture more products. So just your continued commitment and also your application and utilization of our grants and rebates. Then only save us money, but they help us be able to complete those sustainable projects. And I know that's such a big thing for our community. I'm just really proud to say that our community not only is saving money, but helping protect the environment.
Michael.
It's really exciting to be on the other, other end of this, knowing that we are a part of the Measure G team to get this passed. And Sharon, thank you so much. I appreciate the efficiency with, with, with you, with your work. And you're very nimble. I really appreciate that. I just want to make a shout out. And thanks to those who might be listening and to the, all of our board oversight members. That's a critical component of this. And it's important that people know that there's great ways to be involved with your school district. And one of them is being on the Measure G oversight board. Thank you for their work. I wanted to just ask during this time of idle time of our students not being in our campuses, I should say. Have we been able to use that in our favor to, to speed up work and to get things done?
Yes, we've been able, I mean, in twenty twenty, we've been able to get an immense amount of work done on our campuses. I mean, it, it was kind of a little unpredictable in the very beginning in terms of like what can and cannot be done. I think we got like one day off where we call off contractors and we called them all back. And the, you know, we're able to be efficient to have the board pass the resolution that allowed for construction to continue as an essential activity. And so that really helped us. And, you know, and what we also tried to do was not bite off more than we can chew. To, we, we scheduled the work aside, okay, we're going to do it in these little mini phases. It's like, we're going to do this, this month. And if we're still out, we're going to do this next month. And, you know, we're able to get all that in. And, you know, this, this last quarter, we, we did kind of scale back a little bit because, you know, the teachers are back and with reopening and the surges, we wanted to give them more space. We, and really work with the sites in terms of where they want us and where they don't want us. And, you know, that's why we did a lot of exterior painting. We did solar so that we're outside. You know, we're not bothering anybody. And we do do some work inside whenever it is allowable because the teachers are still using their spaces.
Ollie.
I just wanted to concur with what Lavender had said about the, how terrific it is really that those solar panels are going up all over the campuses and also are helping with our, our budget as well. I mean, they're like a, you know, double duty good. And it is also both for our state, which had the wildfires and for our country, you know, with the whole environmental, global warming, it is great to see us be contributing to lessening our, our footprint. So terrific.
Marveen.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I, I can't thank Sharon and her team and Suzie enough because you get to see bond projects around the state. And what was really done here isn't necessarily what's done everywhere. And that resolution you passed really got us on the right track. Thank you for that. I wanted to say, as I visit schools, it's just, it looks so everywhere. It looks so beautiful. Everything looks nice and ready for kids. And sometimes when I walk into a room, there's a teacher teaching online. But, you know, all their furniture is nice and new. So it, it's just great. I know that we're working on trying to put something together like a video for the community. But at some point, when things get a little bit better and we're, you know, maybe in red or orange or something like that, maybe we can do a socially distant caravan instead of the bus tour with CBOC to all of the sites. Because this, I, I walked on, you know, to, I would, I was at Vanoy and just the amphitheater is just gorgeous. And so just everything. So that might be something we want to plan later on with CBOC.
I was just thinking how exciting it will be for our students after being away from their campuses for so long to get to go back to all of this newness and brightness. It's exciting.
Well, I'll just, I'll close with a couple of comments here. And one is that I think even though we have time with the students not on the campuses and so forth, we should remember back a couple of years when there were sadly and tragically all those fires up in Sonoma and so forth. And the ability to actually get contractors to come in and work for us was a significant challenge. And so I think it's really remarkable what you've been able to do in that environment for most of the period of Measure G. And the other thing I'll say is that I appreciate the fact that you mentioned that much of the work is in the walls and in the floor because a lot of the money from Measure G is going to be invisible to most people. They won't be able to see the underfloor and the and the wiring in the walls and so forth. So I think that's, those are really important things, but they tend to disappear. And so thanks for highlighting those as well. Any last comments before we move on? I think I, we had, I think I saw a person's hand raised, Amy.
It was an accident, I think.
They lowered their hand.
They did. Okay. Well, wanted to make sure they got an opportunity if they wanted to have it. So we'll move on then to item ten F, approve the personnel report. This is an action item.
I'm going to approve the personnel report as amended.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mike. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Well, not all those in favor. Trustee Whitaker.
Yes.
Trustee Kuziak.
Yes.
Trustee Adams.
Yes.
Vice President Theodore.
Yes.
And I'll say yes, and that makes it five to zero. The personnel report is approved. I don't believe we have any public comments from what Amy just said. So we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
I don't, I, I don't really have any additional things, especially since it's getting late.
Okay, great. The board member comments. Shane, do you have anything extra you want to say?
Yeah, just a few. And sorry, I got booted out. My computer totally died, but I'm back in the meeting. I've just been working with CSBMA to get a vote on the Board of California EDU. And I've been serving on the SCL advisory board.
Congratulations on that. Chelsea Whitaker.
Yes, last Monday, I joined Karveen and Dolly for our second installment of the Community Alliance Book Club on the book Cast. So that was a very great meeting with the community. And it's nice to hear what people are learning and what they're experiencing and having good conversations in the community about that. And then we will have a Community Alliance meeting next Wednesday that we will be participating in as well.
Great. Trustee Kuziak.
Yeah, first, I just want to thank Amy for bringing in a space heater. Thank you. So I did three things and I have two things, two comments I'd like to make. First, I wanted to thank the Casserelli Educational Foundation for welcoming, welcoming me to their meeting. If there's anyone left on our call tonight, please, please get involved with the Educational Foundation and the good work that they're doing for our community. I look forward to being liaised onto them and uplifting them and supporting them. I did attend the monthly check-in with the Alameda County Office of Education and Dr. Moss from the Alameda County Public Health Department. I, I've got to just say, this is an amazing resource for a new school board member, right, to understand the landscape of the COVID- nineteen challenge we're facing. And it's a really fantastic opportunity to, to learn. It's disappointing about what's happening with vaccine distribution right now. I think that was the most disheartening takeaway from that. But it, it's great to be informed, right? So I appreciated that. I also attended the Martin Luther King Jr. celebration. And I, I just want to thank Dr. Ryman. That was a fantastic program that was put together. I think, you know, when you, you consider how many students were involved and families, we probably had almost two hundred folks there. And just hearing the student voices speak up during that event was just so powerful. And I want, I'm proud of our district and, and, and the commitment to, to that celebration. Two quick comments. I, I think we need to acknowledge and we have as a board acknowledged, Monday starts Black History Month. I was, I was thinking about Lift Every Voice and Sing. I don't know if you've ever heard that. And I was just reading through the lyrics and I was reminded of the sing, sing a song full of the And I was just reading through the lyrics and I was reminded of the sing, sing a song full of the faith that the dark past has taught us. Sing a song full of the hope that the present has brought us. Facing the rising sun of our new day begun, let us march on till victory is won. And I just hope we can take this upcoming month to reflect about our community, our commitment to our American history, which is Black history. And I also would be remiss to not acknowledge that today is International Holocaust Remembrance Day. It's when remember the over 6 million Jews, Roma, the Semite, Slavs, disabled people, members of the LGBTQ community, and many more who were killed by the Nazi regime. I was really moved by reading President Biden's statement today. And I just wanted to share this. He said, "The Holocaust, the Holocaust was no accident of history. It occurred because too many governments bloodedly adopted and implemented hate-fueled laws, policies and practices to vilify and dehumanize entire groups of people. And too many individuals stood by silently. Silence is..."
Thank you, Mike. Those are good comments. I appreciate them. I've seen Jason has his hand raised, I think. And I'd like to call on him if he's, or am I misinterpreting Jason?
No, I didn't have my hand raised intentionally, but, but I appreciated that really thoughtful reflection on the Black National Anthem, Lift Every Voice and Sing, and as well as Holocaust Remembrance Day. Thank you.
Strangely, I see Sherry with a hand raised. Is that another? Am I hallucinating here? And Suzie, there must be something going on here because I'm seeing hands raised all over the place. Maybe their hands were of applause for what Michael said. That's great. So, Trustee Adams.
Yes. So I have like five activities that I have participated in. As Lavender had said, the Community Alliance for the Book Cast. I was able to go to, excuse me, part of that meeting. And it was very good. I mean, the discussions with people are enlightening and enjoyable. And I really like that group. I will be going to the Community Alliance meeting next Wednesday for sure. I did go to the Martin Luther King Celebration as well. And I was able to observe that it was, it was top-notch presentations and celebration. Really, really very well done. The other thing that I did was I participated in the Regional Policy Board for our SELPA or which includes Castro Valley, Hayward, San Leandro and San Lorenzo School Districts for Special Education. And so there are four board members that go to that from each of the districts. And I, there were three new people and one person who'd been there before. So I nominated the person, the one person who'd been there before to be the president. And he nominated me to be the vice president. So there we are with that. And then the two most enjoyable things that I got to do were to visit the hub at Canyon Middle School and actually see students. I was like, just made my, I, I've just, I miss students so much. It was just so wonderful to see. And they are in the library. They're probably distanced even more than six feet apart. Everybody was wearing their masks. They were so engaged. The adults that were around were happy, delightful, positive people. And that hub just looked terrific. And then today I got to go visit CVE, Castro Valley Elementary. And I was able to see the two hubs there, one general ed and one special ed, and talked to the principal. And it was really delightful to, to visit CVE as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dolly. Vice President Theodore.
So I represented our board at the ROP meeting, the Regional Occupational Program meeting. And it was really an orientation meeting. There were, well, I guess I'm, I'm new, even though I've sat on this board before, but only one returning board member and three new members. The other two representatives from Hayward and San Leandro were new to the ROP. The representative from San, San Lorenzo was nominated and elected president. And I'm serving as vice president of ROP this year. So they gave a wonderful overview for the new members about the ROP program. And of course, the challenges in serving students and providing internships and all of those usual opportunities that students get by participating in ROP. But, you know, they did it. They actually had lots of engagement and lots more businesses and organizations coming and presenting to students. And, and there were lots of opportunities for students to learn, even though they didn't get the hands-on internships that students normally do with ROP. And then ROP has started a new program. I can't remember what it's called. But it was a partnership with a health, a community health center, where the community health center was supposed to provide case management services. And ROP would provide education and vocational opportunities for immigrant students or unstably housed or unhoused students. And this last year was the first year. So of course it was, it didn't go as planned. The, the health center ended up backing out. And they were providing the case management. So the ROP took on all of that and brought, I think they said, 40 students through that program in their first year, which I think is incredible considering, you know, they're a school, not a case management system. But they were able to provide those services to students and meet their needs as well as a really enriching program in a time where we can't even sit in the same room together. So I'm excited to be serving on this board again and learning more about that program as it develops. And as we, you know, enter into the next phase of this pandemic. That's it.
Thank you, Dot. I think we'd all agree Linda Granger is a genius and probably the second best superintendent in the state of California. I won't mention the first one since she's here.
We don't want her head to get too big.
I know. So I was in a few things. One, I, I believe these were since our last meeting, the Community Alliance meeting, not the book club, but the alliance, the actual Community Alliance meeting. And I'm looking forward to the meeting next week, I think, when we hope we will be moving forward with some concrete goals and so forth for that organization to undertake. I think several of us were involved in the Capitol Advisors briefing on the budget. And that was really, as it always is, very worthwhile. I believe since we met the, the last time, I received an email from a high school student who is part of the, I hope I don't get this wrong, but I think it's the Women of Color for Change Committee at Castro Valley High School. They were asking for some assistance with getting information out to students about human trafficking. And I will say that Harveen and I were able to arrange for Nancy O'Malley, our district attorney, to be interviewed by these students live on February 3rd, I believe, or March 3rd, that's right, March 3rd. And Mr. Torpe has put this in as Trojan time for the high school. So all the students will hear the DA talk about human trafficking, which is a very serious problem and which she has a special interest. And so that would be a really terrific thing. Michael mentioned the Ed Foundation. I do want to bring up the Rotary for a couple of things that are related to this school district. You might have seen in today's forum, the ad for the talk by John Perkins, who's a physicist at Lawrence Livermore. This is a joint project by Rotary. And the Ed Foundation, his talk will be at 6 o'clock on February 16th. And you can register on the Rotary website to join in that. It's free and open to everybody. And we're hoping to get a lot of students involved in that. And since Dot brought up the ROP, I'll mention also, we have reactivated our vocational committee. And we have a very extremely active group working with the ROP or with the career education teachers at Castro Valley High School to arrange for speakers, which they have a difficult time doing. But it's an extraordinary committee that's working on that. They are just amazing in how much work they've accomplished in no time. So that's all I have. So thanks to everybody who's still on the line with us. There actually are about 14 or 15 people still listening to us. Thank you very much for listening to the bitter end with us. We appreciate your being here. Those of us who are on the board and the superintendent are going to retire now again to closed session. Harveen, I don't think we really need the assistant supes on this part. If you dismiss them.
Yeah.
So it'll be the six of us going back to closed session. And we, I can say that we will report out again when we finish with our business in closed session. I can't say that I know when that is. So my apologies for that, but we'll be as short as we can be. So thanks to everybody for attending. And, you know, it's, I have it now. It's 9:43. And I will suggest that we reconvene in closed session, maybe at 9:50. Is that okay with everyone?
Of course.
Thanks very much. I'll see you in a few minutes. Thanks to everybody for being here. See you at the next meeting. Wow, a lot of clicks to get back here, it seems like. Anyway, we are back in open session. One second, I just want to see something. I just want to say we have one person who is an attendee, Kelly O'Hern. Thank you very much for being with us to the very bitter end. We are back and I have to say, I hope it's not a disappointment to you, Kelly, but the board took no action in that last half of our closed session. So thank you all for being here and look forward to seeing you all in the near future. A lot of hard work tonight, a lot of good things. Good night to everybody. Thanks, Amy.